I have ordered this, uh, I thought we'd need the town council to announce Washington. I was with the, uh, um, I want to be for a people of the agenda.
What's the move?
That's second. Any amendments?
Uh, there, there's stairs, three points in each.
Where do you want that roll?
I'm glad that we did.
Put this on.
You guys okay with this? All, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You. Yeah, from then it's from September ninth. Any, uh, direction to issue these as?
So I can go through.
Oh, it looks like you have her off.
I got the comment that, uh, Jane gave me earlier.
It's all quite good when it was the best one. Thank you. I have motion to approve the minutes with that.
I will.
Second? Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. Um, I have a little of the mayor's report, uh, this month, uh, which is a good thing. Generally speaking, it's been, uh, relatively quiet, uh, since our last meeting. Um, however, we have had a number of, uh, natural disasters occurred to, uh, in, in the country and impacted Southern Virginia. Uh, esteemed colleagues suggested that we might have an open silence just to recognize those folks who have, uh, lost their lives in those, uh, those, uh, natural disasters.
Right, for those people that have never died, has lost, this would have been a fine event. We have had, yes, we there since that occurrence, so we could just take a moment on those folks.
Thank you. Matt Treger, I'm Turner B.
Oh, thank you. I'm just gonna pass along, we've got the first quarter report, which, as usual, really doesn't show any trends or anything. So, um, we can do it however we feel we can, um, say smart.
I have a reminder for the, for the crowd tonight, our fiscal year.
Oh, yes, our fiscal year is July 1st, June 30th. So in January, we'll do another review.
Any questions? Mr. Treger's report. Uh, Mr. Treger, it's not what this, this evening, would you have his, uh, his associate online with us, uh, writing comments? Any, any, uh, comments to get started?
Yes, and, uh, really quick, Matt, nice to meet everyone, uh, glad to be here. But, um, the form we have is for the, maybe Washington, uh, council, if they're here, if they have, uh, the big county attorney, Mr. Goff, filed a petition for removal of the voluntary settlement agreement to bring Rashford home, it's age two, into the town boundary. Other than that, that's the form we have.
Great, thank you, Bob. How long does the, uh, how long does the court have to act on? Or is there a set time frame? I agree with you.
Yeah, honestly, it's at right now, so it's, it's going, there's, um, I was told to, to mention that it's going smoothly, but there's a little bit of, uh, just, just some, some, uh, weight on the court and everything, but it's getting caught up in the court system, so, but it's going, so, that's, that's. Right.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Gage.
Uh, my report's in front of you, it's, uh, a little thirsty. I think the offer of work for the, uh, town council, finding commission is, uh, you're not going to be resting on the wall for the next, uh, three or four months. We have plenty of activity coming forward in, uh, so, uh, other than that, nothing else, nothing out of the ordinary. Ordinary, so, um, this is, um, it's just like, we've got a couple things, and we'll try and make sure as much as we can to support the town council, uh, in November, December.
Excellent. All right, uh, planning issue.
Uh, yes, uh, ma'am, we met, and, uh, the only issue for us was a proposed lot line adjustment for six of three, not seven of eight. And I think that you know, funny that we recommended that we go into that with that. Thank you, ma'am.
Our deal.
Yes, uh, the ARB did not meet September, we will be meeting in October, uh, did meet in July and August, and, uh, did vote after two grounds came in, we just very soon, uh, that was, you know, the law, uh, on, uh, and we did vote two to one in favor of that during the August meeting, as well as the July meeting and airman to be known, and we see the number of public comments put forward, and that's my question, how we consider.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Uh, speaking of that, uh, we do business. The first item we had on new business is appeal regarding the ARB decision to demolish the tribute structure at two eighteen two five. Uh, since we have received the appeal, we have, uh, since, uh, been advised by our council that the appellant may not stand in, uh, to seek the, uh, settled Virginia case law. Um, so the first question we have to ask ourselves in the council is whether or not we would, uh, consider, uh, granting the appellant the standing to do this. It does not appear to me, given that, um, feedback we've received from our council, there's any grounds for us to do that. But it is open debate.
Uh, I wish to review myself from all discussions surrounding this, uh, discussion, this decision.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Any other discussion, questions?
No, I have any further comments?
While I recognize the name of the law, uh, we are a very, very small community. And, both in population and in land area. So, everybody in the town gets impacted by whatever is done in the town. Um, and for that reason, I think in this case, um, it's not someone who lives a mile, two miles, you know, a whole different district of, of a town or a city, um, we all live in very close proximity. So, my feeling is, is as long as there's, it's not going to violate, you get the Jim Code, we have the authority to do that. I would say that the person who filed an appeal should not stand. I think it's, it's right and just.
Um, I, the architectural, there are a number of thoughts I have on this. I'm disappointed, but I respect the decision of the architectural review board. The barn is in terrible shape. And the architectural review board, I respect, took a weighted, uh, time to, uh, I'm sorry, took the time to make a weighted decision. So I respect and will go with, um, the fact that they approved the demolition, and I was therefore support, uh, that decision. I did want to say, I am, uh, very concerned as a member of the town, with a trend that, uh, we have several old buildings in this town that seem to be, uh, deteriorated. And each of them is, um, is a historic or significant structure. And I think that we should either through the architectural review board, or through some other mechanism, try to find a way to ensure that we don't have to address this issue again in two years with another building. That is, uh, that is an important part of the town. We've had two instances, one with the town itself on the building, and, uh, through a lack of action, it deteriorated to such a point that it became a, um, a liability, a hazard. And this is the second building, and as I said, there are two, three other buildings that fall on that line, and I'm very, very concerned about that. And I would like to, uh, I don't know whether it goes to the architectural review board, or whether you have to have a task force to look into it, or whether we talk to our town council, uh, our lawyer, to try to find out what means that we can take, what actions we can take in order to try to stem this from happening again.
I would echo what Fred said, um, and, uh, the, the documentation that the people provided was tremendously helpful to me, I didn't realize the historical background of the area, the, you know, the free, slight use of the sunlight, uh, the difference between Leonsburg architecture and this. On the other hand, I'm very concerned about this idea of standing. I don't see how the particular appellant is individually aggrieved. I mean, it has to be more than a general sense of everyone being aggrieved, it has to have something to do with anything. And I frankly don't see that.
I was, because I agree with Fred, Jamie, and concerned for, I handled the buildings that I see deteriorating in town, but, uh, I think in this instance, I'm not sure we should make the exception, there's a legal default there.
Well, this is going to fall from my first cause regarding the appellant. Regarding the structure itself, um, it's, it's a barn, it's not a residence or anything like that. My opinion is, you could bring in a home builders, and I've seen them do it before, and rebuild that barn back to the condition it was, and it would be a usable property, a usable structure. The owner has spent a lot of money on a lot of other projects. I think this wouldn't be that significant to, we can't bring that barn back to where it should be at. Again, the Amish are incredible craftsmen, they can do a wonderful job with it. And then the barn could serve the purpose of storing hay and grain and other things for the horse, the cow, the donkeys, and the other things that, um, the property owner had indicated were going to be part of their property expansion with the development of the pond. So, you know, yeah, I, I, I oppose the demolition of the building. I think it could be restored.
Any other comments? I will add that I think, you know, this, the town government failed on two counts in this case. Uh, the first count being in twenty eighteen, when this was first raised to the ARB, and the request was denied. The council did not take the action of invoking our demolition by neglect statute and forcing action by the, uh, at that time. Leaving us with a situation where we have a barn that's sort of deteriorated seems unsalvageable, appears unsalvageable based on the assessment of engineers. I would just point, point out, however, that this council takes very, very seriously, this current council, very, very seriously, and the current ARB, the preservation of our historical assets. Uh, we proved that by earlier this year invoking, at very close time, our demolition by neglect statute and forcing the sale of the bar, of the, uh, package shed in town. And what looks like putting that on a trajectory to be, uh, salvaged and turned into a commercial use. Uh, the second part, I will say that we failed on is the fact that, I take first responsibility for this, is not raising the question of standing with our council earlier in this process to save considerable time and effort on the part of the appellant. So I apologize to this plan for that in particular, that, that's my, my fault. However, that all said, I do not see how we could, um, move grant standing in this, in this particular case without exposing ourselves to considerable potential legal action and legal expense. So I would like to move that we deny the hearing of the appeal.
Second?
I want to take a roll call vote and then ask that you all indicate by saying yes or no.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
The motion is adopted, the appeal is denied. Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, next item on new business is the lot line adjustment submitted by J and D, Virginia LLC. Any, uh, presentation from the, uh, advocate? The children's party. Don't eat it.
Four score of seventy.
Yes, you can't make a motion, uh.
Before he says anything else.
Yeah, before he gets going.
I can make a motion at the last, only the justice can prove it.
Awesome. Okay, I will, uh, let's see, I'm just gonna double check here my crib notes from our lawyers and make sure. All right, I have to read out some more general motions. Motion to approve the request by J and D, Virginia LLC to adjust the lot and create a division as shown on the survey plan presented with necessary waivers to do so. Waivers include recognition of a side lot line that is less non-conforming than the previous lot line, limited lot footage frontage, and use of existing access easements shared for Washington school property. And I believe that is a small, I have.
So Gail, was that your motion?
Yes, that was my motion.
Hold on. Let me have a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted, thank you. All right.
We should have made the sweat a little bit.
All right, the next item on the agenda is speed limits in town. You know, as, uh, our lawyers let us know earlier this year, the, um, state, uh, the Congress passed a new law that gave us greater ability to regulate speed limits within the, uh, uh, given, uh, I think many of you would have seen this weekend out and about town, uh, the, uh, the amount of tourism that we experienced, the fact that we don't have sidewalks, uh, which we just, uh, meandering down Main Street, I think it's inherent upon us from a public safety perspective to consider lowering the speed limit in town. Uh, the minimum that we can take it to is fifteen miles an hour. I would like to recommend to the council that we take it to twenty miles an hour, uh, within the town limits. Uh, I've been running a little experiment, I have, as I came into town over the last several weeks, just driving at that speed, it seems pretty, pretty reasonable to me, particularly as you live down Main Street, and though the access is coming into, into town, which I know we've all experienced, the, uh, and even out walking our dogs, et cetera, the folks who come flying in and then slow down at the last minute as they get to Main Street.
Can I say something?
But I say aye, I have open discussion.
It's, I'm in favor of the on this fee, but it, it does nothing if it's not enforced. Uh, and I think that enforcement is more of a problem than a limit. Because, like you say, the people are flying by, and I'm doing twenty-five, they're like forty-five. And if the mayor or someone could talk to maybe the sheriff about, I think, the, that sign about how fast you're going, I think is helpful, um, but it's not enough. And if something could be done about enforcing the speed lines, especially if we, you know, adjusted it lower, to make sure people pay attention to the speed limit.
I'm happy to take a, with sheriff once we.
Yeah, we'll do that.
That'd be a good, good point for discussion.
Yeah, I think we, we, I think they have some signs to mitigate, speed limits have been adjusted.
Yes.
So we'll get those up as well.
The, uh, the only thing I have is with the wording in the first paragraph of, uh, to be further ordained, is the town manager obligated to install the signage within thirty days, or is it the V dot? Or the commissioner of highways? Well, because the way that it's written, it's the town manager clerk is, is to install the required signage, I believe.
And we will, we'll work with V dot to do that.
Okay, so, uh, it should be directly to provide written notice to the commissioner of highways to change in speed limits. I know, plus in thirty days after said written notice, uh, uh, require the commissioner to install required signage. Would be something of that, I defer to my English professor, but, but the way it was written, it was putting poor Barbara.
We'll get her a nice hat for that attitude.
Doing the best.
I've got a little mess on my hair.
It will take thirty minutes to, or even so.
They're just gonna have the sheriff there to tie it up.
If you have, don't install it on that.
So, um.
So if that, and.
Mr. Mayor, then I, I'll go ahead and move that we have this ordinance, uh, with the, uh, change in language, and, uh, a twenty mile per hour speed limit.
One second.
I'll second.
What do you need, but I'll give you a second. Um, any other discussion? All right. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, so the next item on the agenda, on a lighter note, is, uh, setting the date and time for the holiday party, uh, and, uh, sort of keeping with our past, uh, practice of doing it a week after the Christmas parade in Washington. It's set on December fifteenth, from five to seven P M. Questions, concerns, thoughts about doing it differently, as in previous years, we'll do, uh, alphabeticals for the potluck, and, uh, the town will provide, uh, ham, you know, some other odds and ends, as well as the refreshments. And I'm always happy to have a spare elf, Jean is usually very gracious in doing that. But they'll get, I count that at the town hall, so we've got time to work on that. All right, so we'll, we'll set it for, uh, December fifteenth, uh, from five to seven P M. It'll go out in the November water bills.
I thought you said, oh, December twenty second.
That's fifteen.
Okay, I thought it, I, I misunderstood, I thought the fifteenth was the.
Come on by for a drink on the, on Saturday. At my house, yeah. Um, all right, so that's done. And then, uh, we added the, uh, the item regarding this, this stairs, three points to Main Street. This has been a ongoing conversation for the town for some time. Uh, we paused as the property changed hands, and then during the construct, the end construction next door, did not wanna sort of further, uh, engage with the property owners. That was gonna give us some time to get things settled down, but I think at this point here, oh, far overdue for taking some action, uh, or directing a letter to the property owner to say that those stairs, in fact, are on the V dot right away, and, uh, aren't hinging on, uh, the use of that sidewalk, as we've just discussed, uh, on the week. You know, we certainly have a considerable number of tourists who are in town, and, uh, making sure that that walkway is one of our few sidewalks in town, is, is clear and accessible for all, all, uh, folks, I think is important, so. I think the step would be to take, uh, to ask our, uh, our council to send a letter asking for those removal, and if they are not removed in a, in an appropriate period of time, then to, uh, remove them ourselves.
When would be the access to the building?
There's a side access and a rear access to the building. Do mine all.
Yes. We've provided access on our property to the side of the building.
Okay, so can you do that?
Took me a speech a while into.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I made a motion, and I'll just preface it by saying, I'm glad you were finally doing something, because I have been on this topic for three minutes.
In fact, I.
And finally found something to lay out. So I make a motion, uh, move to authorize the zoning administrator to notify the property owner of three two two Main Street. The steps on the V dot right away need to be removed within ninety days, because they are currently blocking the sidewalk, and to authorize the zoning administrator to contact V dot after ninety days if the steps are not removed.
Do you wanna have a letter coming from the camp, from the town administrator, or from the town attorney?
Mr. Aldrich, you think, what, what do you think the appropriate way for our, would be?
I think it would be the town, uh, the town administrator.
I'll second that.
No, it's not.
Okay, I see you have it, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Uh, now, now I'll open it up for comments from the public. Ms. Platt.
I would like to address the, um, the appeal, the motion. I do appreciate your all, but I think it doesn't fit great. But the one thing I would like is, can we make it clear, um, in the future, and it sounds like you were beginning to talk about that. This owner of this property has been on the ARB, and, um, town council, and knows the ornaments and the guidelines. So it is beyond me how anything as lovely as that barn can be demolished. I mean, it's just beyond me. So if there is a task force or some sort of enforcement to give a teeth, I would be happy to volunteer for that. This town is so important, and it's losing, it's, it's losing its heart. And, so, can we do something with that? And don't let this drop like the stairs on the block, Kevin. This is so important, it's going fast.
Thank you, Ms. Platt, I certainly agree too, that's why I put for us to make action over this, your own barn, and certainly push on us to preserve this building in a way actually decent.
Also, you know, I, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of, all these things are going to be, I apologize. But also, if you can make the appeal process easier, because I asked for procedures from day one.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, two days before the deadline where I had to have stuck in, and so, uh, the attorney letter, that says I don't have standing, and then today, I get another letter, less than, what, uh, four hours before a year?
That's the part I.
I think, I don't know much else.
Certainly it was the first time we heard an appeal, so we all learned some hard lessons, and I apologize for, for.
Well, I don't wanna be the lesson learned, but let's learn the lesson.
You should say, maybe it's not, if you wanna make a lesson learned, a lesson identified, so, I guess that's.
But, yeah, if we can all work together and keep this town, just, I mean, it's a job.
Actually, if the council, if we turn the business for just a moment, if the council is willing, suggests that we refer to the, uh, ARB to, perhaps, take a survey of historic properties in town that we may need to, uh, for action on, so, if the, uh, rest of the council is a little bit bad, I'd prefer that to, to chair the ARB for, for action this fall.
You know, there's an inventory listed, well, I don't know now, but I'll bring them back to the town office, but they're beautiful books, and they're very informative, and some of them have significant statements, which, if you read them, you'll see how lovely this town really is. You just got to take the time. And it does take time, it took me time. It takes time, and this is a beautiful community, so, thank you.
What grew all this year?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I, I just was, um, I wanna say, it's a shame that this town is allowing itself to be eaten by eating. And there are too many times, like the Cooks Cottage, that's no longer recognizable, that we take it to its studs, that the barn that was supposed to be taken care of in twenty eighteen wasn't. The unit has failed in its responsibility to this town to preserve this town. And it's about time that the council recognized this and started putting some enforcement. Now I have lights that are not dark, dark skies approved, that are all along the fence, that shine in my, in my doucher every single night. And I'm trying to get action on that, and it hasn't been taken. And I'm trying not to be angry, but I am becoming increasingly angry. and having taken, and I'm trying not to be angry, but I am becoming increasingly angry and feel that the inn is dividing this town, and I think that it's really important that we recognize the division it's causing and start to do something that brings them in and not let them take over this town.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Coming late to the whole field, I haven't read the complete and respect the research that you did, I just want to say that, I really do, because a lot of people do that, so yay for you for doing, regardless of the outcome, I just applaud the effort. As far as the inn has a general statement, I've lived in the county for 30 years, we moved over here probably six years ago, and as much as the inn can be a lightning rod, I on balance, in counterpoint, applaud what they've done for the community, not just for the town of Washington, but for the entire county and for the larger community, so I'd say that.
Notwithstanding.
Oh, no, I think everybody has their opinion, and I think that's wonderful, yeah, not a problem.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I will close public comments, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All, they already think of saying aye?
Aye.
You're adjourned until November 11th.